Okay. So, Town of Boston Gale Planning Board Meeting for May 6th is now in session. Please stand up. I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all. He's not coming. He's stuck in traffic.
He's stuck in traffic?
Uh, for the record, show that Lawrence Howard's not here. Our attorney, Steve Bellini, Becky, and our alternate friend is sitting there. The meeting minutes from February 4th. Been a while. Have a chance to review them. Any comments? Make a motion that the minute be accepted.
Yeah.
Second, in favor? Aye. Oppose? No. Show the meeting minutes from February 4th approved as written. This is to our first item. Uh, we're going Hunter Farrell at forty-nine High Meadow Road, April 4th. It's been an act of minor subdivision for the property owner, Jeff. Now, this is a little different. We've all looked at it. The actual property owner's not here, but we have a email from the property owner and our attorney Lawrence Howard spoke with him and he sent this email. He wouldn't be able to do the subdivision. Board, good with the email or anything else?
What's the subdivision for?
This is just a land purchase.
Yeah.
Or?
Just to make a piece of land.
Seventy-two acres.
That's correct.
You guys aren't going to try to subdivide it and put apartments in it?
Well, maybe a Walmart, but no apartment. No, nothing. No, no.
I just want to make sure everybody's good with the letter and them representing, then we'll get into the subdivision.
I'm looking for the letter. I got it.
It's right here.
Yeah, I got it. It was at the bottom of my list.
Okay.
Lawrence was up there with it, so?
Yeah. Lawrence was good with it, so, um...
Well, I, I have an issue with the fact that I know Lawrence's friends with Chet, so of course, there's that whole...
Would you like more?
Yeah, I think I would like more because I know that Lawrence's friends with Chet Elhalka. And I think, you know, it's, I feel like there might be a little conflict there, so...
What, what would the conflict be? It's a, it's a simple land purchase. There's no conflict. Zero. And plus, there's two owners and the second owner gave his permission as well. I think he might have contacted Stephanie.
I got an email.
He signed the application.
Right. They both signed the, the application, so, you know, there's, there's nothing, there's no conflict here. I don't see, what conflict could there be?
Because if there's anything that a lawyer is looking at and he's friends with the person selling the land, then he might overlook any questions or concerns we might have because he's personally friends with Chet Elhalka.
Okay.
So, our town, the planning board needs to have a non, like a person who is, has no vested interest to ensure that we make the right decision for the town.
Okay, so, we have an email. We could request a formal letter, but it's just an email. I'm personally good with the emails. Anybody else on the board want to weigh in?
I'm good with the email.
Yeah, I'm a good email.
It's a land sale.
Yeah. I'm good with it. Brandon, do you have that?
But in order to sell the land, they have to divide it too.
Yeah.
Do you guys have the map?
We can, yeah. Yeah.
Near the adjacent landowner on the east side.
Let's, uh, before we jump into this, make sure we...
Oh, I didn't know if you wanted to see the maps.
Okay.
Ready to go?
Well, no, I'm not. I want to resolve this first.
Okay, okay. I thought she had questions.
She, well, she has questions about...
That's okay. It doesn't, it's time to survey ourselves.
All right, okay. So... I have no problem with the email and them giving them authority, um, to represent this. I don't think anybody else on the board has a problem. If you'd like, uh, look, we can do a vote for whoever you want, but I'm good with it. Seems like everybody else is good with it, but...
How would it change your feelings if Lawrence were here?
I would still ask him the same question because I know he's good friends with Chet. And so, is he, is he looking after the town or is he looking after his friend? And that's the question I would have. It's just like the, you know...
Well, as, as a lawyer for us, he's legally bound to look at things in our interest. That's just the way the law works, so...
We can vote and that's, that's fair. I'm just saying, I want to make sure everybody understands that I don't feel comfortable with it.
Okay.
Right? Because as far as I'm concerned, an email, yeah, not okay with it.
Okay. Then, let's do a board, uh, vote, excuse me. Out of places, uh, let's take a vote on whether the board is agreeable to accepting the letter. The email as written has authority for these people that are here to represent this subdivision is okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Laura opposes. So, as it stands, we're going to accept the letter, the email, and move on. Now, we can go.
Okay. Thank you. My name is John Dunn. I'm a land surveyor from East Green Bush. And this is Hunter Farrell. He represents his father and his brother on this transaction.
Okay.
As you know, Elhalka and Hunter own a hundred eighty acres of land. And it's divided by Snake Hill Road. We have a parcel that's on, which would be, uh, said north, that would be probably the west, but in the east. So, this is the, the hundred and twelve acres remaining on, on here. And then, this is a separate parcel. It is deed. The tax map number for this lot and this lot are the same. The deed recitation is the same and, but the deed, in the deed, this is a separate parcel. So, they just combined the parcels when they purchased the property. And they are two separate pieces of property before, and now, they, they just collected them and the tax map people put it all into one, uh, one parcel. And the, when they, when they conveyed the deeds, they put it into one parcel. One deed, two parcels. So, we are looking to take the, this parcel here, which is sixty-some acres.
Lot two is described on, lot two is described on your plan, right?
Pardon me?
Lot two is described on the plan.
Yes.
I have, I have a question.
Sir?
Say, say the buts, the property of, of the current owner. Why isn't the, the, uh, the, uh...
Lot line adjustment?
Yeah, lot line adjustment.
Well, I'd be the one buying it, and that's my father there that owns it. So, it's, it'd be two separate pieces of land. I'd do it for an owner, so, that's the whole reason for that.
Really, couldn't they just, uh, go and get a different tax number for the second lot rather than to have?
Well, no, because of the, you know, the, the reason that you have to do, you have to separate it from the deed. As a...
Correct.
It, it's, it's a tricky situation. Usually, a deed has one parcel of property on it. This has two.
But it's under one...
And then, they combined it into one deed. Now, um, so, this would be, this is one piece of property on a deed and one tax map number. So, therefore, this is a two-lot subdivision.
Correct.
It'll revert back to where it was at one time.
So, the old net and bounds would...
Absolutely.
You're going to have to resurvey it?
Oh, yeah, we have to. Well, it wasn't, uh, exactly up to snuff according to the...
Okay.
The, the new standards that we have. Say this and about that, you know? That's the way it goes. So, that's our determination to... And then, we also survey all the properties around here to make sure that they have theirs. So, that's the way, I just don't go in and put one piece of property back. We have to make sure everybody's cop a static here all the way around, which we did.
Okay. Very good.
And they're hunters and they love the land. It's a nice piece of, it's, it's, it's rocky and very steep in the back, and they got a couple hundred yards of, of flat land in the front, but basically, they own the property next to it and, uh, they want to hunt in there. It's, it's a, it's a pretty piece of property, but it's rocky. Which is true here for posting. Most of Snake Hill is rocky.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Lawrence?
No, I, I, like I said, you guys know what my concern is. I don't have to beat a dead horse.
Would you like, ma'am, would you like a big cup and bowl, guy?
Yeah, I am old, so would you?
Right?
So, hundred and twelve acres, you guys are taking seventy-two acres, right?
Was a hundred and eighty-some acres to start off with and the combined acreage for that tax map number. And then, we just couple off that piece on the north, on the east, I guess, would be the subdivision.
You live in the apartment that's being rehabbed?
Excuse me?
Is, are you the persons who own the little apartment thing?
No.
Or no?
No, I live to the east of that on forty-nine High Meadow Road.
High Meadow.
We have iron rods set on all the corners, though.
I got one quick question. You're saying sixty-seven acres?
Yeah.
Yes.
But you're...
It says seventy-two four, I'm remembering.
It says seventy-three on your assessment form.
That's why I was getting a little confused by what we were...
They might have filled that out before we did the...
That's correct, John. That, that was the, that was the tax assessment. And then, after the final survey, whatever the latest data is there from the final survey is the accurate acreage.
So, you have to change, what's that, the EIS?
Yeah.
So, you have to change that.
Yeah. This one has seventy-two...
That's, that's a sketch plan.
That's the sketch plan.
Yeah, that's all right. This, this is the final survey.
This is void.
Well, the sketch plan is just, is you show a general idea of what you're going to do, and then you come in with the nuts and bolts, so I don't care after that.
Yep. Gotcha. Yes, you gotta make that correction. So, you signed it, right?
Mm-hmm. Kind of changing initially right here now.
I'm good with that. Anybody on the board have an issue with that?
No.
We're doing classification tonight.
Do we have the... Go ahead.
Are we doing classification tonight?
Yeah.
Oh, we have documentation, I would say.
That's why it's a minor subdivision.
Yeah.
That's why it's a minor subdivision.
Right, we have to...
Yeah. Right. Let's take care of this board. Do we have the original on this deck or just copies?
I have the original on here.
So, if you want to take care of that.
What is exactly the...
Sixty-seven point one.
The design here doesn't matter really.
We changed the lot to sixty-seven point one acres. And just initial it?
Where we're going to ask the listener?
Yeah.
Rob, do you want to initial that or have a couple people initial it just so that it shows?
Yeah.
You guys aren't the ones who bought the Dover house, right?
Yes.
With the eighty-eight acres?
Yes. Well, it was actually fifty acres.
Oh, because I was thinking it was eighty. I said, yeah, I said eighty on the listing, eighty acres.
Yeah, no, that, that's not accurate.
I'd like to move that we classify this as a two-lot minor subdivision.
Second, in favor? Aye, aye, opposed? Subdivision is a minor subdivision. Board have any other questions? Anything else? Okay? So, um, if the secret...
You got secret, right?
If the secret, um, if the public... I don't know.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Pardon? I've got one. But thank you. Now, just, does the secret need a sub, uh, public here?
They're usually a public here.
Yeah, they're state, they're not a secret.
And then, here, and then, they can be done in the same night.
Okay. It was a secret of the public hearing, so, as it stands right now, we're good. We'll sit for public hearing for our next meeting.
Yeah.
Which is...
The June...
Third. Okay? Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm a little rusty. Better was it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll put your names in.
Okay.
Okay. Um, you can hang on to them. You don't want these right now, right? Rob, the map, do you need any of that? You guys can take them.
I tell you what, can you keep one of what we have?
There's, there's two of them both.
Okay. Because what we have is just the initial draft.
And neither the actual survey?
Yeah, it's the, it's the copy, yeah.
I'll open mine.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks.
And I'm going to say something, okay? And that's not true because when Rensselaer Platteau was here, Lawrence was not very forthcoming about how he was involved with the Rensselaer Platteau. So, do I think it could be? Yes. So, I'm sorry, but his previous actions have caused me some concern on his, the, his, uh, manner as far as what, what the town, the planning board's concerns are. At least Jeff got up and said, "I'm on the board," and he sat down and wasn't involved.
Okay.
Okay? Where Lawrence was making decisions or not helping us with making decisions, and he is an active trustee. So, I do have examples of him not always maybe having, for me, the town's interest in, uh, his number one priority.
Okay.
And I had heard that these guys are very much interested in, in doing, uh, development of that land.
Okay, but that doesn't...
That doesn't stop anything, but I'm just saying...
It doesn't change a minor two-lot... Yeah, it doesn't change anything if it's a minor two-lot subdivision.
No, I don't have a problem with the subdivision. I'm just saying, I don't particularly feel comfortable, so...
Okay. Okay, so, um... Wanted to talk about the private drive and how the birdage is. If anybody's had time to look at this. So...
This the driveway thing?
So, what we have in our town code versus what the state fire code is is pretty much the issue. So... I want to see if we can revise the code to include what's in the state fire code. And, uh, so...
This one?
It's the fire code pertaining to private drives and access and ingress and drafts for driveways.
Well, I know there was a point where we were trying not to do keyhole lots because of that concern. Isn't that true, Luke?
What was that?
That years, like maybe ten, fifteen years ago, there was some concern over the keyhole lots because the trucks couldn't get in there to turn around, right?
Coal stocks that were...
Right, right. And so, what's the, so we're not matching the state rules or what?
Oh, since we're already agreeing with the state code book and all the codes, do we need to update our town code?
To...
To duplicate what's already written and we have to follow that?
Well, the problem is, is when you go to the E code, it doesn't show you the requirements at the fire code that we're following.
Right.
It just says private drive and it just says over a hundred and fifty foot.
Correct.
It doesn't give you any of the standards that break down your New York State fire code to where if you put a supplement in the E code, then the advocate could just click on that and have all the details rather than having to come to the town, not have all the answers, not be prepared. It just cleans up the way the code is. It's not changing the guidelines or any files. They don't have that in front of them.
It's essentially making it easier access for the people.
Yeah.
Because they don't have access to the fire code online without having a subscription or coming down here to see trace.
Yeah.
That's the point of doing it, so...
Can you just reference the, the state code?
Yeah.
Well, we have to reference the state code anyway from what I'm gathering. We're referring to it just for making it accessible. We're making it accessible for the people, not adding it to our E code.
Well, we're also adding more definition to it so that they know they have to go to the state also, because if you read this by itself, there isn't a reference.
Okay.
Right? Okay, so, most people don't know they have to read more than just this. So, by giving a reference, it gives more information and lets people know what they have to do.
We might just like copy and what's the word with the fire code already said in the hard code book because it's already written for us.
Right.
Duplicate what's already done. As long as we're defining...
Yeah.
Thirty feet is what? This entrance or exit used by a vehicle to or from a one or two family residence, thirty feet to a hundred and fifty feet length.
Right, and that's...
Of, what, width, thirty feet wide?
Well...
What's the...
Anything under a hundred and fifty feet is a private driveway.
So, they're just saying, this is what quantitates or this is how we describe a private driveway. It's thirty feet to a hundred and fifty feet long.
No.
Anything less than a hundred and fifty feet isn't a private road, falls under driveway limits. Once you go over a hundred and fifty feet, then it's a private drive.
I see it now.
Twenty feet wide. Go over five hundred feet, then it's twenty-six feet wide. And turnaround comes into effect.
Which is all referenced in the state fire code.
Right.
So, all we want to do is make an adjustment to the E code so it takes people to that information.
To the right information.
Right. Makes it a little...
If they had access to it.
Yes, makes it a little clearer.
So, after a hundred and fifty feet, it's a, it's no longer a driveway?
Private road. For a New York State fire code.
And how long does, how, how long can a private road be, just like any road?
I believe the highest number that the state fire code gives you is seven hundred and fifty feet. I don't know if there's an, an actual allotment that you're allowed to go, but I think anything above seven hundred and fifty, it gives you the widths, the turnaround size, how many turnarounds, all that, vice versa. But I don't think there's an actual limit. I mean, I'd have to look at the book upstairs and pull it for a fact, but I believe seven fifty is the highest number they offer in the chart. I mean, at that point, once you get above five hundred, you're, you're building a private road, it's the same width as a town highway. So, you could go for a mile if they had enough property, but it's going to be a two-page report.
Okay?
So, it's twenty feet wide out to five hundred feet?
I believe, yeah, up to five hundred is twenty feet, and then, once you get above five hundred, I believe it goes to twenty-four, twenty-six. I could be off by a quarter or two. I'm not looking at...
And it says twenty-six, yeah. So, then, beyond a hundred and fifty feet, you have to have a hammerhead turn or some other acceptable turn around?
If you're building a private road, yeah, you have, there's a whole list of turnarounds in that fire code that allow you to have a hammerhead, there's a ninety-six foot cul-de-sac, and then, there's a U-shaped one in there, which those are all referenced in our E code now for new construction of developments and residential roads. So, I mean, it's pretty cut and dry for those.
I think it would make sense, like how, how confusing the laws are, to have something that the people can click and get to what the requirements are.
So, the objective here is to provide access to the state document?
Yes.
Electronically?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, then how about the printed version of this? Are we following the same procedure with a, with a printed code? So that if, if somebody looks up the printed code, they're, they're given a reference to the state?
I would think so.
And how, how would that happen?
I don't know. Do you have any information on this thing?
I would, we'll talk to her, we'll, we'll get that footage put in, and I can come back to you with an answer.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
I don't know if the E code and everything, if we don't spell it out in our code code, they would have a link to fire.
We will have to break down.
Or do we just spell it out, what we want to say?
I would just be taking the fire code and incorporating it.
Yeah, but then, if you don't update it when the fire code updates, then... Yeah, but then if you don't update it when the fire code updates, then you run into the same problem where you're not seeing ahead of time, so.
Yeah.
Return to the fire code, then as that updates, every few years, you're saying.
In our E code, I should just reference the fire code.
Yeah.
So would, would the state code be added as an, as an appendix or something like that?
Or a reference to the state code, which does anyway, references state codes in other places.
But the actual text of the state code?
Isn't reprinted, it's entitled everywhere.
Binder full problem.
I would like to give information on the state code in a print copy.
You would?
I, I would. Like I said, I like to double check myself, but again, information is most important. And a printed copy, I think we should have that, not just, you know, for, go to the state code. Well, might be difficult for that person to go to the state code. And, but again, I would, I would like to double check.
Okay.
See what we could do, and I can back you with an answer through gentleman.
Sounds good. How good was that?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Need to talk about? The, uh.
I have one question. I know the Cassell property changed hands and they're still, still hanging issue out there. It's, uh, has that been resolved at all? I know, I know they did a lot of fill into the, the wetlands there and things, and so. What's that? They got a cease and dismissal. I know, but I mean, I, it's still hanging there, so nothing, nothing going on there.
As far as I know.
Okay. We were changing hands, could you please put it? Well, as far as I know, the, the property changed hands from Cassell to some real estate group. The last paperwork I saw at all that was mentioned, I believe it changed to a, to a real estate group. I don't think it changed there. I don't think it changed there. No, it, okay. I may, I may be mistaken, but I, I saw a thing, paperwork that I had seen that we, we have been given, said something about, their Cassell, and then there was another group mentioned that I believe was the purchaser of the, of the property. I may be wrong about that, but that was my understanding.
And that's his daughter, I think, owns that.
Oh, okay.
Real estate group.
So technically it's still.
So it remains a real estate company, yeah.
Yeah. Because I know they had for sale signs up there for a while, and then some of them came down, some of them are still up, I mean, you know.
Yeah, I hope they're still up there.
Well, the one on the house isn't there anymore, it's on the porch. And I think the one on the corner is gone, I don't know. Maybe, maybe it reappeared, I don't know. There for a while, they, they were, they were up and then they were gone, so I don't know. There's a, there's a lot of equipment sitting out in the back there on top of all that fill, so I don't know.
Don, I have a new letter from January sixteenth that I can get to you from Department of Army.
Yes.
On the report, yeah.
Right, I remember we got, I got a copy of that, yeah.
So yes, that is the latest.
Okay.
And there is a.
Okay, so it's still on the cease and desist, then, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
So Jeff, you asked about this document. This has to do with multiple dwellings on a single lot?
Yeah, I mean, we had, we were talking about it.
You can overlook it over and we'll talk about it at the next meeting, or if there's one to discuss a little bit now.
Yes, the question is.
Well, having separate addresses on the driveways, if you have a multiple unit with three, or multiple people living, so on multiple dwellings, if you attach somebody, attach a building of three or more dwellings, it's need to have a nine-one-one address at the street. So their emergency vehicles know where they need to go. And currently, we don't have that definition.
Yeah. The dwelling part is, Tracy, we just ran into a situation where multiple dwelling came into place. And if you read, it says it could be three or more dwelling units on the same lot, which means it could be a three, three apartments in one building. But we also have just a boot house, which, and we have one family, two families, and we have all these different ones. So Tracy wants the board to just kind of look at it and see if we can combine them, because that could be an issue with two families or more. And it doesn't say how many.
It's in the post office, requires separate mailboxes put all together.
So that's a different thing. That is the premise of the definition. So the premises identification is another thing that we were, we were talking to a couple guys at the firehouse, and they tested instances where, there's been like two houses at one driveway, and the mailboxes have the numbers at the bottom.
Right.
But they don't have as to which house is what.
Which house is which, yep.
So. We had talked, and we're trying to get somebody going forward, doing any minor subdivisions or major subdivisions, or even reaching out to the people and just saying, hey, especially if we may have a new ambulance service coming in, you might want to just get a mark of your houses better.
Yeah.
So that's that part there that I did in the, on that section five oh five. But the development dwelling ones is the ones that Tracy wants us to see if we can combine them so that it's not so confusing. Because that multiple dwelling allows three or more. But we have a two-family.
So here's the limit.
Yeah. So you just kind of wide open on that. And it says on the same lot.
Same actual lot itself, like so if you have a family and they, they split their land and their daughter's living behind them, right? That's very.
Or if somebody puts up a half, a, a building and has three apartments in it, well, technically, they say, well, we can't do that.
Right.
The town doesn't allow it. Multiple dwellings does, in, in our definitions. So it does allow it.
Maybe we need to change it.
Yeah. So that's the other thing. So that's another one we need to work on.
So what about a senior living center with core dwelling units on one lot?
Multiple dwellings.
It's all one building.
Multiple dwellings, three or more dwelling units.
Yeah.
If they have the acreage.
Yeah, if it's.
We just need to maybe think about this, and we're turning it back up at the next meeting and talk about it in some more depth, okay? We just wanted to throw it out there, we're going to have to sort, so to speak, okay? And breathe through a little background between now and.
June thirty.
So the idea is that we want to be able to get emergency vehicles to a dwelling unit.
That's part of it. The other part is where it says three or more, and maybe defining this a little better where it's duplex dwelling, dwelling units, multiple dwellings.
Right.
Where does it stop?
Right.
Right? So breathe through these definitions and.
If anybody wants, if you have any ideas, I'd kind of come on.
So we can discuss it in depth. Back to me.
Yeah.
Does that good?
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask one more thing?
Yes, sure.
Because way back when, the density law came from planning board when you had the issue with block view. So, do you want to weigh in on that again for the town code?
I just think it needs to be changed, because that was crazy. That was like, if the elevation was a certain thing, you couldn't build. All we were trying to avoid was not allowing people to count wetlands so that they could cram in a whole bunch of houses or apartments. That, it was supposed to be something just simple like that, but from what I understood, that law was, was way, it would restrict anybody who has like any type of elevation to their, to their lot that they could not build. So we need to maybe bring it back and try to like cross it all out and just say, hey, you can't count wetlands when you're doing a development. It's just that simple. I don't know why we have to get into such a convoluted situation here. We, we don't want people to count wetlands so that they can put fifteen houses, even though there's only three active, you know, lots that you can build on. Why is this difficult? I'm just curious, why?
So, okay, so what section is that, do you know?
Well, no, that never went in.
Never went in, yeah.
That goes back to like our old town attorney Andy Gilchrist that wrote it off, and it's constrained lands. And like you were saying, not only was it wetlands, but it was slopes and this and that, the other.
It was crazy.
Maybe the thing to do would be to get the planning board that old.
Yeah. Yeah, because really, the, the only premise was we, because of the lot view, they had the seven acres.
There we go. We'll throw that on the June third, too. It'll be busy June third.
We've had a couple, we've had a couple months off, so maybe it's now kind of our stuff for an R P.
Okay, we'll just throw that on for June third, too, and discuss it all at the same time with the dwellings. We'll just make the meeting a little bit more about discussing codes and things.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that good? Thank you very much. Is that good? Works for me? Anybody else have anything else?
No, I think I'm done. I sent everybody off.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn the meetings? We don't have Steve here.
I'll make the motion. The only other getting will do it.
Make some motion. I have a second. Thirty seconds, all in favor?
Aight.
Meetings adjourned at seven forty-four P M. Thank you very much.
Nothing but entertainment here.